It is six thirty two P M. March eighteenth, two thousand twenty four. My name is Kevin Ellis. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board this year, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. As I do, I'm going to read some brief introductory notes. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts two thousand twenty-three, spending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You hereby advise that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with M G L, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty F, so that I, as the Chair, may inform all other participants of said recording. All right, not seeing anyone. With that, I will introduce my colleagues in the board, which also serve as kind of an attendance. I have Tracy Schreiber here.
Here.
Gordon Carr.
Here.
I have Gary Tondarkdick.
Here.
Thanks, Gary. And as I said earlier, I'm Kevin Ellis, and I think we're waiting on our fifth member, Rita De Silva, who we expect will be joining us.
Yeah, Rita knows the meetings at seven, at six thirty, so she should be joining us.
Okay, well, we can get going on kind of the, you know, the opening piece. I think Rita's seen a lot of this and, and then, and obviously kind of rope her into the discussion. So tonight's meeting is solely devoted to zoning articles. And two of those articles are pretty intricately related. They are the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Article G G G and MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Article L L L. So I'm going to open both of them at the same time, so I think it'll allow us to kind of have cross discussion, which makes a lot of sense. I asked staff, and I think Emily in particular, just to give us a very brief overview of kind of where we are, specifically some changes that maybe we've seen, not so much to L L L, but to G G G, because we did ask for some specific changes last time. And I think the board can kind of start talking about where they are and what they're thinking, and we'll go from there. So Emily, your mic, whoever's going to kind of take us in that direction, please go ahead.
Yep, happy to bear with me. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so here we are, March eighteenth, to discuss two different MBTA zoning articles. As a quick recap, and again, I won't belabor this. I know you guys have heard this multiple times at this point. But broadly, the new state law, it's Section Three A of Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty Eight, Forty A, excuse me, now requires that all MBTA communities have at least one zoning district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right, which just means pursuant to a building permit, potentially with a site plan approval, and meets these other bulleted criteria. The first is that the district overall needs to provide a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, not more than, the district rather, should be located within a half mile from public transit. There be no age restrictions, and the units should be suitable for families with children. So that's what the two thousand twenty-one statute requires. Building on that, the state, what was the Department of Housing and Community Development, is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, issued guidelines that interprets in some ways what, what the statute means based on the type of MBTA community a municipality happens to fall into. They issued guidelines. Initially, the final guidelines were issued in August of two thousand twenty-two. They've been modified in a couple of ways since then. But you can see at the bottom of the screen what those guidelines introduced. So in part, the guidelines interpret what a reasonable size is. For most communities, that's fifty acres of land area, but also a certain minimum unit capacity, which depending on the type of transit community or MBTA community you are, you have to hit a certain number of units. In the case of Hingham, which qualifies as a commuter rail community, we have to provide fifteen percent or zoning capacity equal to fifteen percent of the number of housing units we had reported on the two thousand twenty census. That translates to one thousand four hundred and ninety units. Additionally, the guidelines suggest that only a portion of the district be located within a half mile of public transit. In the case of Hingham, that is seventy-five percent of the district overall. And there's, you know, a number of other, I guess, subsets of these requirements that, you know, if anybody has questions about, we're, we're happy to answer. But that's kind of the, the new law in a nutshell. The way Hingham has approached this, or did initially, was through what is Article G G G. The majority of the land area and the zoning capacity for by right multifamily units is focused on areas where we have in fact already developed multifamily housing, not necessarily by right, instead by special permit or through a comprehensive permit. You can see the principal area, the largest contiguous area of both the initial proposed Article G G G and then subsequently proposed Article L L L identified here, including by sub-district. So these sub-districts, and we'll get into this, you know, in a little bit more detail on later slides. But the first sub-district, which is the highest proposed density, is in that light blue color. It consists of Hewitt's Landing to the north and to the south of this view, the Avalon Two property at three nineteen Lincoln Street. The next highest density sub-district is in purple here. That is presently built out by the Avalon One Multifamily Development at one eleven Fitzroy Drive. And then finally, you can see a portion of Proposed Sub-District Four that presently consists of the Avalon One Town Home Development at one fifty-two Shipyard Drive. So that would apply to either of the pending zoning articles before you. This next slide also relates to both Articles G G G and L L L. This is property located at three hundred and three fifty Beale Street. It is known as the Cove. It was initially permitted through a comprehensive permit and falls just within the half-mile radius of the Hingham Ferry Transit Station because its frontage touches on that bound. Again, this, this property relates to both of the pending zoning articles. Article G G G alone, so this one is part of the original MBTA zoning article that was proposed. It has been modified by the board. We read the board's request through the public hearing process. So in its current form, it is this parcel identified in yellow. It would be a part of its own separate Sub-District Five and is located about point six miles away from the East Waymouth Commuter Rail Station and about point eight miles away from the West Hingham Commuter Rail Station. So this property before you on this slide would qualify toward the twenty-five percent of the district that is permitted to be located outside of a transit area. This slide just summarizes some of the changes that have been made to that initial article, particularly with respect to the French Street, what is now its own sub-district. As I mentioned on the prior slide, it is now located in the least dense proposed sub-district, known as Sub-District Five. A number of the parcels that were in the original proposal have been eliminated. So it is focused just on one parcel that is presently used as a non-conformers, a non-conforming contractor's yard. It's approximately eight point five acres overall, just under seven of that is developable. The board had suggested that, again, we decrease the density of what had originally been proposed in this area from eighteen units per acre to eight units per acre. That would result in a maximum permissible unit capacity of sixty-nine units. The, the board also discussed at the last meeting reducing the types of multifamily housing that would be allowed in this particular sub-district. It would primarily consist of two families and multi-unit developments, some of which could be as low as three units, as high as ten units, provided they appear or are built as townhome style. And then finally, some language you didn't have specifically in front of you, but members of the working group had presented was a limitation or further limitation on the types of units that could be located closer to French Street. So you can see this italicized language right here is an attempt to capture what that requirement would be or how it would read. It says the area between the fifty-foot front yard setback and you, you can see that down here at the bottom. Oh, I'm sorry, over here at the bottom of your screen. And an additional hundred feet or two, a hundred and fifty feet from the front property line can only be developed with two family dwellings and essentially three family dwellings or multi-unit dwellings that have a maximum of three units within them. The slightly larger townhome-style units could be located further from a hundred and fifty feet from the front property line. So it's, we, we kind of talked about how the density would step back from the street. And then an additional design requirement that was built into the most recent red line of this Article G G G that you saw would prohibit parking structures from the French Street Sub-District. And then some of these other red highlighted dimensions you can see in the table at the bottom of the slide we discussed last week as a reminder. In order to reduce the density in Sub-District Five, we had to compensate in Sub-District One by increasing density so that we could still hit that minimum unit capacity or reasonable size. Over here on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see what this table would generate in the compliance model overall. So there'd be a total of fifty-two developable acres proposed in Article G G G, and that would yield a minimum unit capacity of one thousand four hundred and ninety-three. So there's a, a small surplus just of, of three units in terms of capacity. Turning to the more recently proposed Article L L L in place of the French Street Sub-District proposed by Article G G G, the board advanced another zoning article that would incorporate two other station area parcels located at one Sergeant William B. Terry Way. Again, just as a reminder, that's presently improved by the Bridges Assisted Living or Nursing Home Development. And then a second parcel at two twenty-five Beale Street that is occupied today by Hitchcock Shoe. And this, you know, is not far from the Cove development that we saw as part of both districts across the street. This is Lynch Field here. So that gives you a little bit of context in terms of the detail I just mentioned, the, the addresses for these two parcels. They are proposed to be located in what was the lowest density sub-district in the original MBTA article. So that's at fifteen units per acre. The other component of that existing sub-district that we had presented and related to both of the proposed articles is the Avalon Town Homes Development at one
Thank you, Emily. That's, that's really helpful. And to the extent there's members of the public that haven't been with us before, it's, it's an important overview of the process. So I do see that we have thirty-three people on the call, you know, and, and, you know, maybe some twenty-five odd members of the public on the call. We'll certainly get to public comment. I, I just think from the board's perspective, just in terms of facilitating a, a, like kind of a directional conversation that we should think about to some degree now, what our thoughts are on the French Street proposal as modified. And this new language we've seen tonight that kind of carries out some of the directive we've been, we've been pushing, you know, the committee to give us. And your thoughts on kind of the proposed Beale Street parcel and, and consider them. We talked about the possibility of presenting both to town meeting. I mean, obviously, I'm one member of the board, but I feel pretty strongly that it's our job to make a recommendation and not kind of say to town meeting or advisory, hey, you know, we kind of, here's all the options you can pick, and why don't you go through victim? I mean, nobody knows this better than we do at this point, and I think that it's important for us to make a recommendation. I'm happy to discuss as a board, but that is where I stand on that. And we need to talk about the possibility, possibility of putting both of these proposals forward. We can certainly talk about that. I'm not sure that that serves us very well. It would just add additional housing. But, you know, certainly could have a conversation about that. So I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go first. I know it's a difficult conversation. So I, I mean, I think on balance with the changes in the French Street parcel, that I'm more inclined to move that forward, partly because it's a non-conforming usage and we could bring it into conformity, and partly because I'm persuaded by the conversations we, you know, in the letters we received about spreading out some of the density of the housing and cog isn't kind of the, the development of the Beale Street area. You know, I, I understand that no matter where development goes, it's going to add some congestion to that area. And I think the work that we've done on the phasing does really create a very, I mean, units is our understanding is the minimum in terms of density, does create a very, I don't know, a much more residential feel. It's in conformity with that neighborhood than we, where we started. So on, on balance, I think that's where I'm headed. I'm happy, obviously, to listen to colleagues in the board and talk about it and to listen to members of the public. But I think that it would be helpful from our perspective if we're looking at the language, this red line language, to kind of, to think about which of these two proposals we'd like to see, because the red line language does change in the, in the two proposals, at least from what I've noticed. And it would take, I think, quite a bit of time to go through both of them. And I'm not really sure what we get out of looking at the red line language for both of them and then having this discussion. But, you know, I'm, I'm open to conversation there as well. So I'll stop. Tracy, I see you kind of first in my box and, you know, your thoughts. I mean, you and Gary have done obviously some more intense French Street parcel here.
No, I, I think I'm in line with you. I kind of prefer the French Street site. I think we got great feedback last week from a handful of members of that neighborhood. I do feel like it was just a little not comfortable with part of the Beale Street site, you know, it being assisted living that's probably never going to, you know, get developed. I mean, maybe they move out and, and, and something could then happen. But it just didn't seem like it really met the, you know, the, what the Communities Act was trying to accomplish to me. And we've gotten quite a bit of, of feedback from neighbors there saying that they feel like they've taken the, the brunt of the multifamily housing in the neighborhood. So.
Thank you, Tracy. Gordon, you've unmuted yourself, so I'll take that as volunteering.
Sure. So I've struggled with this quite a bit. I've said, I think, probably on every one of these meetings, the frustration I have with the legislation itself. And so the idea of seeking to meet the letter of the law, right, and, and meet compliance under its definition. We're just trying to meet the spirit of the law, which is, I think, opaque at this point, given how kind of conflicting some of the requirements and restrictions are of that. So it's, it's tricky for me. I, I, I think the Beale Street property meets the, it meets the intent of the law such as it is, given that it's proximity to the, the ferry station, it's proximity to all the other ancillary services and amenities and all of that kind of thing that, that a high-density multifamily facility, perhaps without cars, might need. Supermarkets, drugstores, shopping, all of that sort of thing, right? All within presumably walking distance of the Beale Street property. Problem is, is Tracy just said, it's already incredibly dense there. And while Beale Street would potentially solve any potential wastewater problems with a high-density multifamily development, geez, the infrastructure around there is, is tight. So I'm not sure what we would be doing there then. If I look at, at French Street and I, I can't say enough about what my colleagues have done in looking at that parcel and trying to find out what, you know, is much more reasonable than what had been kind of contemplated under the fifteen unit density. It's not walking distance really much, right? It's not walking distance really to the, the train stations. But it, but it could be a much more reasonable residential development, particularly with the, with the changes proposed. So, and I think I've probably just said all the things everybody's already thinking. But it is that, that is a, a difficult pro-con list for me. I think we can say with confidence from, from Emily and Susan that either one of them would be deemed compliant by the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, which is great progress for us. Although if I can editorialize, it's not going to stop here, right? Because if this legislation doesn't produce the housing, even though it's not designed to produce housing, it's only designed to produce zoning, the conclusion will not be, oh, perhaps the approach was flawed. The conclusion will be, it didn't go far enough. The restrictions weren't tight enough. The sticks weren't big enough. And we're going to be, I predict, having conversations like this from the, from, from future legislation again. But we need to first deal with what is before us now. So there are lots of members of the public, and I, I do appreciate hearing from them. I greatly appreciated hearing from them last week based on the improvements that, that had been suggested and what will be incorporated into G G G, if I remember correctly. So anyway, now I have shared my conflict and the, what I, but I think it's not an easy decision for us. I would say that whichever we decide ought to be a pretty, it says confidently, easy decision for town meeting, right? It is compliant. It still maintains a fair amount of control on the part of the town. It takes us out of the jeopardy that we're seeing some of our neighboring communities facing, which is now going straight to the S J C, I got it. So that's my hope with whatever we put forward would be looked on favorably by, by both that comment and town meeting. And now I will stop.
Thanks, Gordon, very much. Gary, you're unmuted. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Yes, it's been a, a really complicated and, and complex process that we've gone through. And I think that being able to have several hearings where we've been able to try to optimize and mitigate the impacts on the French Street parcel to a degree that would be acceptable to the, to the neighbors and to the town and has, has seen a lot of support from the folks writing in letters. And I take letters that you write very seriously. And in looking at and being part of our little working group where we've tried to mitigate it by layering up the zoning density, where we match the density of the perimeter surrounding neighborhoods, which is two-and-a-half-story, some one, some two-family zoning. And then on the interior of the parcel, if there is an increase in density that's needed, we can do it in the, in the lower-scale zoning, can shield that inner zoning density from, from being different in character from the neighborhood. So I think that's been a very, very helpful process. In, in looking at this several weeks ago, we, it, it, it seemed to be clear that what we weren't seeing in, although we had mitigated the, the conflicts, relative potential conflicts with the scale and character within, with the adjacent neighborhoods, what I didn't see fully addressed was, in the French Street parcel, was a pedestrian access to the MBTA, the, the East Waymouth, but also the spirit of the, in the letter of the, of the MBTA Communities legislation wants to suggest and that the, that housing sub-districts be located near rich amenities and public transportation and station area so that, that, that can be reinforced. So these act and the, and the recovery from, from the COVID pandemic, you know, we're seeing not necessarily a hundred percent utilization of some of these properties. And would it be appropriate to look at some kind of an adaptive reuse overlay and maybe include some of those properties in the sub-district? I thought that was a great idea from a planning perspective. However, it didn't seem to pass muster, so we, we moved away from that for, for good reasons. And then that's when I was thinking, well, maybe in order to, to, to provide housing consistent with this initiative that's within the transit station area sub-district, shouldn't we be also looking at a companion or a parallel review of a parcel that was in that sub-district? And thereby, we had the introduction of the Beale Street, two twenty-five Beale Street, which is the Hancock Shoe and then the Epic Memory Care Facility adjacent. And so that's kind of where, I'm, I'm still conflicted. I, I'm not totally resolved. And I'm trying to work it out. So what's best for the town? You know, within these almost impossible constraints that we're trying to work with from the state, how do we work it so that at least we can mitigate the impact? But also, how can we work this so that we essentially support areas of the town that could benefit from the introduction of this? Areas of the town that could benefit from the introduction of this housing, which is a primary economic generator. How this, how the introduction of more housing in the town could not only address the housing crisis in town, but also. Address the the uh another need in the town, which is to foster and increase commercial. And economic development, and I just thought introducing a. Primary economic generator into the Beale Street parcel in an appropriate density with an appropriate understanding of the in the the impacts and mitigation. Real uh potential. We could look at that. So I'm still conflicted. I I I have lis- read and listened very, very um clearly to and seriously to. All the cars, well, well thought, well placed commentary from. Folks in both adjacent to both the French Street Parcel Sub District and also to the Beale Street Sub District Parcel. And um, I see that we have constraints and opportunities in both. My one concern about. Tabling one and and voting on one only. Is is that this is an extremely important issue for the whole town. Yes, we've had great participation on the Zoom meetings, but we're a very, very small slice of the town, and I I just. I think that the town meet, we're making a recommendation to town meetings. Town meeting is gonna make this ultimate decision through a vote. I'm just thinking. Although I understand it might be a little bit more difficult to manage. On the other hand, I wouldn't want to be in a situation where we were a town meeting and people said, well, you know, you're favoring one versus the other. When both have similar constraints and opportunities. And so that I'm I'm still not resolved on just going with one, because I think town meeting needs to see both. The other thing that I'm concerned about is um. You know, watching the the scenario that's happening right now in other towns who are. Milton, for example, I've been following Milton's process very closely. I attended the town meeting in in uh in the fall and January. Um. I have been listening in on the discussions of the Milton Planning Board. They are basically doing a very proactive approach. If I figure out a solution to this problem, it works for Milton. And they're not being obstructionist as the media, I think, is portraying. Um. So I just bring that up because. When the state goes and reviews this, we have one issue here where. We have a situation of dense, minimum density that might be. Acceptable in terms of passing muster with the state, and if the state doesn't allow us to do eight units per acre. Which is our recommendation for what's best for Hingham in this. In this review, and they kick it out. I was just thinking, also, it would be good to have a contingency plan. That would essentially say that, no, the state isn't gonna put us under some kind of legal pressure or something to. Do something that we really don't want to do. Um, not that this is what we really want to do, but I mean, we're kind of stuck between hearts. Hard uh rock and hard place. I just, those are just my thoughts. I'm I'm still unresolved on both. Which one we should go with and also um, the uh. Um, you know, what, uh, the having a contingency, but I mean, resolved about, we always should have a choice. Um. So I'd like to hear from members of the public to who are attending on the call here. I'd like to get a sense of a pulse. Better sense of the pulse of everybody at here before I make a recommendation on on the question you raised earlier, Kevin.
Sure, Gary, that's a point. Um, Rita, you know, sent, please go ahead.
Sure, I I I want to first thank everybody for all their letters coming on and all their opinions, their knowledge. It's been eye opening. I'm kind of. Almost like Gary, I'm at a standstill. I don't know, I was one way at the very beginning, but now my eyes are kind of opened. To uh both, so I'm not sure where to go. And Gary made it uh. For me, Gary made a great point. We are a very small, small slice of the pie. This is a very. You know, big thing for the town, and and I would like, as Gary had mentioned, to bring this. Two articles to town meeting and have the town decide. Because I think, you know, the five of us, it goes to advisory, and then to the select board, just to go with one. I think the town should look at both and decide what they would like to do, because I see, I I I see both sides. I do see the Beale Street side, that is a lot of objection over there, and I still see the French Street side. Even though some of them were happy of what we did, I'm not sure all of them are happy of. The proposal we stole, the smaller proposal. So I'm kind of with Gary, I'd like to bring both. So that's where I can end.
Thanks, Rita. Okay, um. My fellow, we, at least my goal is to try to get us to a decision tonight. Um, why don't we go to members of the public? Uh, there's uh thirty-eight people on the call. Some of whom are, I said, board members and and staff. Um, if if you have any comments for the board, please just state your, raise your hand. That are physically, electronically, state your name and address to the record, and I'll happily call on you, and um, we'll go from there. Uh, you know, in interest of the time, you try to limit your comments to, you know, three or so minutes. And certainly if we have more time, we'll call on you again. So, uh, Mr. Waters, I see you up there, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank, let's see, thank you, can you hear me?
Yep, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, this is my first meeting and uh, actually.
Say your name and address for the record, Mr. Waters.
Oh yeah, sure, it's Jerry Waters and I'm a trustee uh of Back River Condos across the street from the LLL. Uh parcel, and uh, I'm a, this is our first meeting. In fact, uh, I just found out about this and my neighbors just found out about this just days ago. So, um, you know, it's my first meeting, I'm impressed with the the thought process that you've put into this so far. I can see that's a lot of hard work. Uh, uh, been invested already. I read the slides that I could find online and I read all the commentary that was online, which was also very helpful, and I know you've all evaluated that. But I want to note that um, all the commentary, except for the commentary maybe in the last. Two or three days, has been about modification of the GGD, GGG, French Street proposal. And there's very little comment from people in this area because we were frankly unaware of it. Um, so what I would request is that we. Be given the opportunity to speak our mind, which we haven't really uh um, uh been able to do so so far. So that you all who are. Considering these opinions actually have them in your hand and can 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 do so. Uh, so I would ask for kind of a delay and give us a chance to 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 sort of um, give you our opinion so that you can evaluate them.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, um. Understood, I, the only constraint we have in delay is that um. We are, we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, uh, but um, a potential meeting scheduled for Wednesday, although we will be short a member, so I'm cognizant of. Really wanting five members who have been part of this process to vote. Um, we are running up against the printing of a warrant for a town meeting, and. I personally feel very strongly that having this recommendation in the warrant so the town as a whole can read it is pretty important. So I see that as kind of a um, I don't know, a throttle on on how much delay there is built into this process. So that that's, that's the only constraint I see in that, um, and and obviously it's up to the board itself, but um, that is something that we've kind of been working backwards from to try to meet that deadline.
I understand there's a deadline. I I still think there's a kind of an issue of fairness and um completeness in the evaluation. And I think that the neighbors around LLL have not been given the opportunity to to really provide adequate input. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Uh, Mr. Fraser, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Clark Fraser, fifty Bonnie Brier Circle Hingham. Uh, I've not paid as much as much attention to this as I should, have been busy doing other things. Uh, but I'm concerned about, I have some concerns about the French Street site, which is currently. From looking at the maps outside the scope of the Hingham Sewer District. And uh. Problem is that uh Hingham sued MWRA some years ago to expand the district and lost. So uh, how? Uh, would an infrastructure problem like that, lack of sewer service be? Uh, taken into account? Now, obviously, you can zone for whatever you want, but I I'm wondering about the. Whether that that could be built, and I'm also. Had some concerns about rezoning existing developments which are condominiums. How would you ever? Rebuild a condominium complex? I'm totally clueless as how you would do that. So uh, I I have more questions, but I'm particularly concerned about the French Street site. I think it's too remote. And I think that uh, it would be better. If you could find the land to stay within the the Hingham Sewer District. Uh, I'm speaking on my own and not as the Chair of the Sewer Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Uh, Mr. Dealey, please.
Sorry, uh, John Dealey, fourteen Willing Court. In Hingham, uh, so I've missed the last couple of meetings. But when I read from this uh proposal for LLL. That the town is counting on the state to agree. That somewhere around thirteen hundred and seventy or plus or minus units. That have been built over the last ten years are going to be credited towards the fourteen hundred ninety units that we're supposed to create. And that what we are proposing is an additional. Hundred and twenty or hundred and thirty units. At French Street and um on Beale Street and Stagentary Drive. Um, and I was wondering um if we have uh, put this to the state at all as a. Pre-approval. Given that uh town meeting is coming up soon. So, any uh update on? The state's response to our approach?
Emily, I'll I'll let you pine in here, um, or maybe Susan Burka, I know she's on the call somewhere, who's our town real estate council, um. You you know, you you can go through the process of you, our comfort level with counting, kind of previously built housing. And and, you know, uh, Mr. Really, the the requirement of the law is that we zone, not that we build. And if we zone areas, and even if there's currently buildings on them. The idea is that by zoning them, they could be rebuilt to potentially match the density in the as of right, you know, the zoning that's in place, the 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 buildings that are in place are not as upright. So the zoning would create an, you know, by right building. Ability, and that would be quite a substantial change, quite frankly, from what we typically see in town. Um, so that is what the law requires of us, and that is what we're meeting. Emily, to the idea of, you know, where other towns have previously built housing, um, I I know that exists, but you know. You can please, you know, go ahead and kind of just give them some comfort on that.
Yeah, um, I, our working group, um, including, you know, myself, Mike Silvera, Susan Murphy. Have participated in uh dozens of trainings on this law. Um, the guidelines and the compliance model at this point. Um, the state. It, you know, has confirmed for all MBTA communities that this is about creating zoning capacity. Not necessarily production. So as a lo- as long as we allow multifamily housing that meets all of their criteria. Um, by right, instead of through some other permitting mechanism, it doesn't matter what's on the ground today. Because someday that could be redeveloped pursuant to the the new rules. Um, in terms of the pre-approval, we have not been able to pursue that. It it does require. Um, a significant amount of information, including GIS shape files. That we didn't even have for Article LLL. Um, until this past weekend, due to the timing of, um, you know, when that was proposed. And the the public hearing got underway. Um, so we haven't been in a position yet. Because there hasn't been guidance on which option we're going with, um, to request that review from EOHLC. Even if we were to do that um tomorrow, if we were to receive guidance tonight. Um, the turnaround time is ninety days, so.
So, there's no chance that of any indication from the state where they agree. In some pre-approval process before the town meeting, is that right?
Yeah, not in their formal free, not quite approval, but feedback, informal feedback. Um, application process before town meeting. Um, so instead, we're relying on all the other reviews that we've seen them issue and or. Final compliance determinations for other communities, along with, you know, if anybody's visited their webpage. Um, it's not just the guidelines that are out there, there's a guide on the economic feasibility analysis. There's a guide on landmaps, there's a guide on the compliance model. Um, so we're. We're relying on their formal um guidance documents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dealey, thank you, Emily. Uh, Mr. Richmond, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Jonathan Richmond, fourteen Back River Road. I'm one of the other trustees of the condominium association, and. I don't want to spend a lot of time just to repeat what Jerry said, but basically, we found out about this on Thursday, maybe it's shame on us and and for that. I'm sorry, uh, but we didn't know anything about this until it was brought to our attention uh by Bruce Zidorski, who was on this call. And uh, you know, so we don't have. As a, as a community, we don't have an opinion. I don't expect that we will have an opinion as a community, other than the individuals within the community. But I do believe strongly that all of those individuals should be afforded the opportunity, as the French Street people were. To review the details, you know, talk about mitigation issues like you did uh so successfully. With the uh, with the French people, uh, French Street people. Um. So I guess, uh, again, get back to what Jerry said, it's, you know, an issue of fairness in terms of no opportunity. Clearly, there's a traffic density issue here, especially on game days. Um, there's, and it's dangerous. Uh, there's kids walking all over the place, there's, there's cars every. Every lined up on all of these streets, as I'm sure all of you have seen. Uh, so to add more density to that may be an issue, but again, we just like the opportunity to review and comment on it before it goes for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Um, Mr. Bright?
There we go. Um, my name's Thomas Bright, I live at thirty-four Peering Road, I own the building at two twenty-five Beale Street. Um, I'm an interested observer to what the committee is is deciding. Um, and really not much more than that in terms, I mean, I have shared the concerns of the neighbors about traffic. But I can also reassure the neighbors that um, it is highly unlikely. That anything is going to happen at that LLL um. Parcel, our building and, excuse me, and um, and bridges. In the foreseeable future, so this is not an imminent. Change in the neighborhood in in any any uh shape. I would just uh say to the committee. Um, that um. I think you would be ill-advised to go to town meeting. With a proposal that essentially pits. Ask the town to decide between two neighborhoods. I think that's um just politically. Upsetting, and I I mean, I think you guys should make up your minds, make a recommendation. If it doesn't pass town meeting. Then you'll have to have a special one, you'll have to do, you know, make the changes that uh, that uh, uh, seem to be in order. But uh, to actually to go into town meeting with potentially two. I won't, I don't want to say warring, that's too much, but but two um neighborhoods with conflicting viewpoints and asking the town to decide between. And and most of these people won't have heard anything about any of this. I just, I just think it's. I wouldn't do it if I were you. End of comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bright. Thank you, Laura Seid. Uh, Ms. Almond?
Hi, this is Kathleen Almond. Um. My husband David Beal and I live at nineteen Back River Road, immediately adjacent to Lynch Field. And I just wanted, I wanted to um, first of all, agree with Tom's. Comment about bringing this to a town meeting, it just doesn't seem like um. We we in our community didn't really have time and enough information to really make an informed decision about how we feel about this, and certainly the. The town individuals for the same reason, right? So I I I really think that this committee should at least provide their advice and comment. So, that's the first point I wanted to make. I I guess I just um. I feel like you you've done a lot of hard work and you worked very um with the French Street um, adjacent residents and. Seem to have come up with a solution that they're comfortable with, and you've done all this hard work, and I I feel like um. That's, that's a good way to move forward, you know, um, with what you have. I, obviously, we have concerns about our. Property and our, the traffic and all the kinds of things that happen with or potentially could happen, and I do understand. That this is not gonna happen tomorrow, but um, you know, our 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 part of town has been um. You know, at the place where lots of um multi-story development has been approved and moving forward, so I I just, I I really support the idea of. Of making the town more fully engaged in all of this and and not kind of sticking everything down at our end of town, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam. Any other members of the public, I'm just not seeing one hand rated, if I'm missing you, please just go ahead and speak up and say your name and address to the record.
Bruce Isador?
Mr. Isador, go ahead, I'm just not seeing on my screen, but please go ahead.
Yeah.
I I can see there, sir, go ahead, please, it's just your address to the record, please.
Uh, Bruce Isador, six Heron Way, um, I live down in the Back River Complex as well. I mean, I I I think you guys have put in, the planning board has put in a tremendous amount of work here, and I appreciate that. I'm I'm a little confused because I haven't had the time either to review the legislation or or all the proposals, but I'm a little confused how the sites were determined, because apparently there was sites determined that haven't changed, even though they're already developed. There are sites that were picked such as French Street, which is a nonconforming use. So it put into service under this legislation that if it ultimately passes. And it's ultimately supported as as being permitted, we put a nonconform, take out a nonconforming use, which I think is in the town's best interest. But you somehow spent a tremendous amount of time on this French Street property, and then somehow very recently moved over to Beale Street. Not sure that the uh abudders you're hearing from Back River or elsewhere are necessarily against Beale Street, they're just against the fact that they haven't had the chance to weigh in and deal with the same kind of factors that happened at French Street. And I don't know if there's other, but but as soon as you move to developed parcels, such as you're moving to two twenty-five Beale Street or one Sergeant Terry, and you're moving to develop parcels, I imagine you could pick develop parcels in a lot of places in the town. You could pick, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you could pick two single family, three single family, four single family houses somewhere. And say they can get together and sell and they and they become multifamily housing, there's probably a lot of places that could be considered if we're going to actually deal with improved property. So it seems to me that you spent all this time on the French Street property and spent the time not excluding it, but working with the residents to come up with a proposal that at least some of the residents find at least compelling or satisfactory, to then move to Beale Street without that same kind of intensity or review. Or to turn around and say the town meeting, hey, we picked Beale Street, we picked French Street, you guys decide, and we'll put all of the evidence at town meeting seems like we're punting. If we're going to punt, we probably should look at a lot of parcels in town, a lot of improved parcels, and see whether they meet the criteria, and we're not doing that. I think there was a comment earlier made by one of the members of the planning board saying that this may not be the end of it, because we may find that we don't create enough housing through this. And it's not like they're not going to do it again, they'll do it with more specificity and try and force towns to do more multifamily housing. So the issue of the Beale Street property, for example, is likely to come up again. But at that same time, we'll have a better understanding of what's being asked of us. And we can look at other properties as well, so it's it's not just the fact that we've overloaded this section of Hingham with multifamily housing, it's also we're not doing the review on Beale Street that's anywhere close to review on French Street. I think French Street has had five hearings on the French Street property, we've had one on 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 Beale Street, and I don't even know when that one took place, I guess it was the last meeting, but we didn't have any notice of it. So it's not necessarily that we're objecting to it, and it could be included in the future. I just think the planning board would be remiss to do anything but to go with what they have on French Street now, because if you don't have the ability to delay any further, then you've already done the review and analysis to make French Street acceptable. And you haven't really done that with Beale Street, and there's probably other parcels that are equally as good as both of those, if we're going to use improved parcels. So at this point, you've taken the nonconforming use parcel and and have it potentially be something that's at least conforming in the residential zone with residential use, and we're not eliminating a commercial property from our zoning. And if this comes back again, we have an opportunity to not only look at Beale Street, but look at other places in town, because we're willing to look at improved parcels. So that's that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Isador. Any other members of the public on the call?
Hello?
Please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jane Marshall. I live at twenty-eight French Street. And I just had a couple of questions, because I have kind of um been to these meetings, and um I'm really concerned with even having French Street on the table. Um, is the uh Beale Street already zoned for multifamily housing?
No, Emily, do you want to, you want to just get kind of overview of what the zoning is currently, is there? You're muted, sorry.
Well, but depending on where we are on Beale Street, the the alternate um Article L L L, so the one Sergeant William B. Terry um Drive Parcel and two twenty-five Beale Street are zoned um both limited industrial and um industrial.
Okay, so does that, does that, oh, so that doesn't incorporate multifamily, that would not cover that, that would have to go on town warrant to be rezoned for multifamily?
That's what um Article L L L would um create through an overlay district, just as um the French Street Article G G G would create this by right multifamily zoning through an overlay district. So the underlying um single family zoning over on French Street would remain an option. Um, this would just create another option.
Okay, and then I had another um question about um just um, do the property owners um have to agree with the rezoning? Of their, like, if their property is going to be rezoned, do they have any input with that, or or the, or they can just, it doesn't matter what they think?
That they, um, well, this is a public hearing, so anybody would have um input. Again, the way these are proposed, um, it's just an overlay district, it simply provides another option for either the current owners or future owners of the property. Um, but anyone is welcome, including um property owners to participate in the public hearing process.
I guess my question is, you don't need to have their okay to rezone it.
Yeah, that's right, it's it's an overlay on top of the existing zoning, so essentially creating more you know, more optionality for the current zoning or more optionality for the property, so it's not a permission based kind of process.
Okay, and they would have no recourse, they would um, they wouldn't be able to, other than go into town meeting and vote and voting against it?
Uh, I'm not comfortable saying they'd have no recourse, I mean, I suppose someone could sue the state and object to a change in zoning at their property or sue the town, um, but I'm not sure on what grounds, I don't, I don't want to opine on that.
Okay. All right, um, I guess just to um sum up, I I'm sure you can sense how I feel about having French Street the um the G G G option, um, I I wish we would take it off the table. But I do agree with that a gentleman who spoke earlier, um, putting it to town meeting, putting it on the warrant, and having, you know, this against this, this game against this game is is probably not in our best interest, but I'm not really sure what the answer is then in that case. Um, that's actually all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other members of the public, Mr. Fraser, I see your hands back up or still up, I'll certainly call you again.
Yeah, I I I wanted to say one more thing. I was watching this, I pretty well am against the French Street proposal. Uh, because I think the planning should be very sensitive, not in the infrastructure, which I raised, but also accessibility. Any of the parcels, including uh some of the existing condo complexes on Beale Street are close enough to be able to walk to stores and uh use the MBTA, it's a place you could live without a car. Uh, and I don't think French Street is such a place. Uh, besides lack of sidewalks, it's just simply too far. I I would suggest the planning board, you really ought to try to find a way to actually produce some housing with this that of of what we want, and I think what I would want, living in the town, is more development where the stores are and where the public transportation is, and not overdeveloped parcels, which everybody will have to have a car. So I think the French Street thing would just introduce additional auto traffic, which might or might not occur uh on some Beale Street place. I mean, we've got other condo complexes, some of which have may may have major problems uh in their present state. Uh, and it should be looked at as what, what's, what is the life cycle of these condo complexes? Clear to me that the shipyard complex will not be rebuilt anytime soon. But even though there were problems, I understand in the building, and but there are other complexes that are fifty or seventy years old that uh may have to be rebuilt. Uh, so I I I'd just say that, and again, from the infrastructure point of view, you should stay away from areas that don't have sewers and where we cannot easily add sewers. And also stay out of the floodplain, but you know that part.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Uh, Mr. Roth, I see your hand raised there?
Hi, yes, Jonathan Roth, East Stone Gate Lane. Um, just to clarify, there's some commentary around, uh, I know the the folks around Beale Street finding out uh recently. Um, the the folks in the French Street neighborhood found out like similarly uh to our surprise, so um just want to provide a little bit of context from our perspective there, but um it's kind of two, two questions and comments. One is kind of for the board, like for those that support the French Street uh parcel, it is That would be helpful, but I really appreciate all the work that's gone in since it was brought to my attention maybe six weeks ago, uh, but uh just I'll I'll pause there.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, I mean, I'll I'll speak for myself on on your first question about kind of compliance with the act. I mean, one, on its face, the act allows twenty-five percent of the um kind of the districts or the district to be outside of um you know, to to be kind of removed from the public transit. But e- even in i- i- in in this process, if we were to go with the French Street parcel, I think the French Street parcel would be zoned, Emily, I don't want to misspeak here, but for something like sixty-nine units. So I mean, sixty-nine of fourteen hundred is certainly not a significant number that is not, you know, kind of in in within the mile radius of the zoning. So I mean, from my perspective, I look at this and say, we're very, very compliant with the spirit of the law. And on top of that, we have the opportunity to do a couple of other things here. One, you know, spread out some of the density in town, um, two, you know, develop, you know, give an option for developing a parcel that's not currently there that might move away from a nonconforming use if someone wanted to pursue that. And, you know, three, that we've done a good job of balancing the, you know, the density in that area with kind of the residential kind of model, and and I see that as a as a plus for the process and and the development. I mean, so that that's how I would speak to that and answer that, I I cannot speak for the four colleagues on the board, I'm happy for them to chime in if they like, but by no means, you know, everyone has to provide and answer every question.
I'll I'll chime in briefly since I uh raised that, so the um, my my sense is that the guidelines about being within walking distance to amenities and and things of that nature is because that's a that's an incentive for a developer, right? That, you know, if I'm going to build high density multifamily, you know, um, and I can make the case for you know, less parking and all that kind of stuff, because can, people can walk and all that kind of thing, that um, I, my sense is that's to speak to the developer. And if those things don't exist on another parcel, kind of like some of the other elements that are are not requirements of the legislation um that might make development on a parcel less desirable, that's just that's just the way it is, so um if um if French Street lacks some of the the basic things that would make a development much more sort of economically feasible and 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 marketable, things like town sewer and, you know, proximity to all those things, then um the 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 market will shake that out. Um, uh, and the other point I think I would make is, Emily, if if we have a a a max density at eight units an acre, right, that's the, that's the top end, right? People could propose less than that, the developer could propose less than that.
Yep.
Um, uh, depending on, you know, how whatever they choose to build, or whatever the current property owner choose to allow to be built. Um, but again, we're, we're stealing a base in one sense, because we're talking about zoning, uh, but but we can't help thinking, okay, what could the consequence of that zoning be, or what was the market response uh to that zoning, should it be in place in these these different places? And and Kevin's right, the the vast majority of what we're proposing is going to be within walking distance um of of those amenities and all that kind of thing versus being just outside as as French Street, so just an observation about speculation.
Thank you, Gordon. Um, M- Mr. Resko, I see you, I don't think you've spoken, Mr. Water, I'll have to call you again, just I just want to try to get people here and smoking that, please go ahead.
Hey, thank you, it's uh Phil Resko, one ninety-eight Holbert Street. And um appreciated discussion, so just to understand on the sewerage, it, there's a constraint on sewerage, but it wouldn't apply to the Beale Street area, because it's, there's already sewer capacity there, is that my, is that accurate?
Yeah, I I don't, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to speak to that, that there's unlimited capacity in the sewer system or not, but that the area does currently have sewer and a development presumably could hook up to sewer, right, Emily, I mean, there's no, the zoning doesn't offer any limitations on that, it would be the same as if, you know, any other um, you know, the zoning for that area, any other building being constructed, this except for would be kind of a residential overlay to it.
Because one of the previous calls identified hopefully accurately that the area of critical environmental concern feeding into the Back River covers that probably covers the same area at Beale Street too, but it's um, again, you wouldn't be putting uh some kind of wastewater system into that area if you were able to access sewer, I guess, is one of the factors I would see. And then to the the other discussion about amenities and convenience to amenities, that then corresponds to traffic, I would expect, which again, hasn't been mentioned tonight, but the, you know, the traffic from French Street into High Street or French Street to to go the other way toward three A, you know, both of those are are approaching um high density, high areas, I mean, the folks that travel down High Street see the tipped over fire hydrant there that didn't happen um you know, because of light traffic. So um, and and absolutely her, here the Beale Street folks were, you know, they're in the same position as was mentioned, we were six weeks ago to learn about this. And the traffic down there is obviously a, you know, a the a town issue today with um the Lynch Field and so forth, but um, but again, that convenience to three A kind of ports that traffic out without traveling across different neighborhoods. That's um, you know, those are the things that I'm seeing in in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resko. Um, Mr. Water, sorry, one moment, there's just some other people that haven't spoken yet, now, Ms. Hampton, please go ahead.
Thank you, I spoke last time, so I'll just be very brief.
Can you do something, give your address to the record, please, Ms. Hampton?
Oh, I'm sorry, Anne Fenton, forty-six Ridgewood Crossing.
Thank you.
Um, with regard to the distance from the French Street property to amenities, I call Dunkin' Donuts an amenity. Uh, but mostly the train station, which I think speaks to the legislation. Uh, it's, what did you say, about roughly point six miles? And presumably, if it were developed, the developer will be required to build uh sidewalks. I live, my house, I just looked it up on Google, is by foot one mile from the train station. Since I turned eighty, I don't do it very much, but when I first moved there, I walked to and from the train station many times. There wasn't a cab, I walked home. So I just wanted to dispute, you know, the the statement that it is not, um if you you can call Dunkin' Donuts in the liquor store, I suppose, that are close by amenities, but the principal thing is that it is within walking distance of the train station for a lot of people. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Waters, I think you're up, you finally uh cleared the table here, please go ahead. Yeah, uh, again, I don't think I gave my address before, it's twenty-two Back River Road. Thank you. And um I'm coming, as I said, late, so I just have a a question. Um, it seems like the L L
Um, it seems like the L L L parcel, the Beale Beale Street area was chosen because it's close to the ferry. Um, and early in the meeting, Ms. Wentworth um, said Hingham qualifies as commuter rail community. So I just want to make sure that that the 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 ferry, in fact, is is considered on in this MBTA proposal as a suitable site. That's number one. And number two, I, i- if it is, I just want to say that, um, you know, it only goes really one place and Bo- it's Boston. So the train goes to many places. You can get off along the way and you have access to many different communities and bus lines and so forth. There's that. And then thirdly, we almost lost the the uh, um, ferry during the pandemic or after the pandemic. So it's not like a hard-wired rail rail line. I just want to point these three things out and ask a question about, you know, the the proximity of Beale Street being, well, Beale Street being selected because of proximity to the to the ferry.
Thanks, Mr. Waters. Uh, Emily, do you just want to opine kind of on the on the suitability of the ferry as a as a transit hub, you know, if you're more technical?
Yeah, um, so there are four different types of MBTA communities. Uh, there's rapid transit, uh, bus communities, commuter rail communities that also could um, include ferry terminals. So ferry and commuter rail are in the same category. And then there are adjacent communities um, that in fact have no transit within their bounds. Um, but they are still also required to create by right multifamily zoning districts. Um, so those are the four types, commuter rail and ferry, they're the same category.
Thank you, Emily. Um, Ms. Ho, I think you have your hand raised here?
Did you say Ms. Almond?
Oh, no, uh, Ho, I see, H O. Uh, they're on the top left of my screen, sorry. Oh, you're muted now. There you go.
Uh, can you hear me?
We can, please. Is your name added to the record?
Okay, all right. So Ho Chan at fourteen Beale Row. Thank you for everyone's hard work. We appreciate that. Just like many others talk about earlier, I just find out on my labors last week about this. So I think uh, I'm in favor, I echo Jerry, Jonathan and Booth. I think I am in favor of like going to the town and get the rope. And and I think it will be helpful if we can set up the rule of the row, what to exclude, what are the rules for exclusion going forward. And my other point I want to make is, well, if we put it into Beale Street, we already have all these amenities set up. So does that mean that going forward, whenever we have something, we need to add more housing? Does that mean we will just take it the convenience and put it into that area? So that's, 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 that's my thought. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Uh, Ms. Alma, please go ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanted to just add one other thought after listening to various comments around um, environmental impact that we do need to think about that in the Back River area too, right? I mean, um, Spare Cove Park, um, um, I I, you know, we haven't had time to really look at this or think about it or research it, but um, you know, this part of town has has some special environmental value, right, to the town? So we should think about that and all of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any else on the call want to speak? Please, welcome your comments. Um, state your name and address for the record and 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 raise your hand. Sorry, I'm kind of bouncing between my screens. I'm not seeing anybody else. Um, Ms. Bettinger?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, Nancy Bettinger, forty-three Jones Street. Obviously, I'm on the other side of town and I'm not an a butter to either of these areas, but one question I had about the French Street proposal is whether there would ever be a a wastewater treatment system that could be built at a at a price that would be, make it even feasible to develop that area. I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not arguing it either way. Perhaps the fellow from the sewer department has a better feel for that, but that area does um, direct, it, you know, it's got surface water pretty much running through it and is very close to the up further up on the Back River there. Um, and I think the whole thing is an area of critical environmental concern. I'm not sure about that, but I mean, to get a, to get something permitted, they'd have to have a really um, super um, sort of onsite system, it seems to me, but, you know, I I don't know if that's even.
Ms. Bettinger, I I can't answer the question with kind of a definitive, uh, you know, yes or no, but I mean, you're right that that development on the site would need to treat its own wastewater on the site, because there is no sewer there. So we need to have a system that's capable of handling the, you know, the capacity that it wants to develop on the site. Mr. Fraser, I see you there. Just one moment, let me make sure no one else is uh, looking to speak that hasn't spoken yet already. Uh, you can go ahead, Mr. Fraser. I think we're gonna, uh, or Mr. Roth, um, one moment here, you can go after Mr. Fraser. Go ahead, please, sir.
Uh, who'd you ask to speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Fraser.
Oh, okay. Uh, briefly, the, I believe the French Street site is pretty much uh, rock. And uh, we have a nitrogen problem in the town of Hingham in general. And there's a lot of controversy over whether that's coming from septic system. There was a study done some years ago to to uh, sewer the entire town, done about ten years ago. Um, our problem with with getting to the French Street site is simply a political one, dealing with MWRA. Um, and it's my impression now that we do have enough capacity. We don't have enough capacity right now, but we're going to town meeting with the bond issue because we're running into the the sewer, the pipes right at Stoddart's Neck are full. Uh, and we're going to have to spend some real money to fix that. And when we do, we will have some capacity. But we have to also pay attention to the condition of the rest of the system because stormwater is filling the system up and wiping out our capacity. And then the other problem we have is we're competing with other towns around the region that have the same issue. That the system is transporting more water to Deer Island than comes out of the faucet. So it's a complicated problem. Uh, but we, uh, one thing I I would don't think we should be doing is is local treatment for multifamily housing in Hingham. Uh, because I think I see now algae and other things like that down uh, near World's End and places that are not sewer, and I'm thinking we're getting.
On character of that neighborhood of the surrounding French Street location?
Uh, I mean, I'll take that question. I don't, I mean, without seeing a development, I think it's quite difficult to opine on style and character, but I think that residential housing in a residential neighborhood certainly fits in with the neighborhood as a general matter. But yeah, you know, that that site plan review criteria really is a kind of an on-the-ground site review, and it would involve looking at a proposed project. So it's it's a little hard to overlay that onto um, kind of a a zoning element where we'd allow a certain type of housing, at least I think that it's hard, but um, you know, I think conceptually allowing, you know, relatively light residential development in a residential area certainly is in, generally speaking, within this, you know, this scale of the neighborhood, at least from my perspective. Gary, you have your hand raised.
If I may, um, the, our approach on our on our design work, uh, standards working group was to say that we'd have a two-and-a-half-story max, and we would try to do a townhouse type of an approach rather than a garden apartment kind of an approach, which is a smaller footprint, but more residential, like a duplex type of an approach, which would be more consistent architecturally with what you currently have in the two-and-a-half-story buildings, residential buildings in in this vicinity. And then north of the French Street site, you have more of the two, you have more two families. So is, we thought it was a way of layering in with a consistent character that would pick up on in a lot of areas which there.
Thank you, Gary. Gordon, did I, did I cut you off? I'm sorry if you were.
No, I just, I think the current use is uh, departure from the character of the rest of the neighborhood now as a, as a industrial, you know, uh, construction yard. Um, and to to Gary's point, I think there are a number of ways, and as we, as we keep saying, the the top-end numbers that we're talking about from density perspective are the top-end numbers. Um, and to to Kevin's point, we can't really predict that um, without a project. This is the, this circle that we're in, you know, talking only about zoning, but inevitably trying to extrapolate what that zoning will actually do, when none of us um, really know, um, and won't be able to deal with that until the time.
That's very accurate, Gordon. That's right.
Could I be heard, Mr. Chairman, Bruce Zizator?
Oh, sure, Mr. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm having trouble raising raising my hand and getting.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a, just a couple points. Um, since I think even as as Ms. Wentworth indicated that this applies to adjacent towns as well, I think the goal of this legislation is multifamily housing and access to transportation. And if Mr. Fraser wants some of the amenities because he doesn't want to have a car, there's already thousands of units that he can pick from, and I'll supply a local broker he can talk to. There's plenty of choices he can make to do that. Today, today's environment is very different than what it was years ago. People are using Uber, people are using online to order food from shopping centers. I I can have, I don't have to go near Whole Foods or Trader Joe's or any of those places, even Costco's will deliver right to my house. So access to transportation is worthwhile because I gotta, I have to get somewhere. The other thing is, if you took a look at Beale Street now and the multifamily developments, I would venture to say that everybody, not everybody, but a large percentage have automobiles, because they're not just going to, walking to go somewhere and staying in that area, but they travel to a lot of different places. So they have access to 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 an automobile. And lastly, I think Jerry Waters made a very good point. I think that the distance to the train station is really important because the train station takes you to access to a lot of different places by bus and further transit by rail that the commuter boat doesn't take you. So I think that's why you included French Street when you first started looking at this. And you've analyzed it to the end of the grid. And it just seems that if you have to make a recommendation to town meeting now, the one you're prepared to make a recommendation on is French Street. May or may not get developed. I mean, that's not really the issue at this point. But that recommendation makes sense. Does Beale Street make sense? It might. And maybe at some future point that gets analyzed as well. Maybe it gets analyzed even when there's not legislation pending, but somebody wants to make a zoning change to include Beale Street and change French Street later on. I mean, there's a lot of other options, but right now, I don't think Beale Street has had the analysis that's warranted, and it's certainly that area has had its brunt of multifamily housing. So at some point, maybe we can just take a collective breath and go with what we know and what we've studied, and then move on in the future to look at other options.
Thank you, Mr. Zizator. All right, I am, um, you know, per- per a lot of the public, it's eight o'clock. Um, I I think it's time for the board to really, I don't want to do its job, but to really kind of figure out what we want to do for moving forward. Um, uh, you know, I I still stand where I started. Um, I I just really do believe that you know, that that spacing this development out a bit, uh, the creating kind of this, you know, the 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 style of housing in French Street wouldn't necessarily potentially, you know, I I don't know what would be created, but kind of zoning for it doesn't, um, you know, undermine the character of that neighborhood, and it it certainly allows for the development of you know, this multifamily housing in this slightly stretched-out area of town. I am pretty persuaded by that. I think we've given French Street a lot of thought, and I think we're at a point where we've found something that's quite workable in that area. And I'm inclined to move forward on that. I am, I I do share some of the concerns about Beale Street and just the density and the code just being built there and kind of letting some of that process play out there before we add to that area. Um, you know, I I do find a bit of that persuasive. Um, I do think about Mr. Fallon's letter and kind of the opportunity to show that development out, um, that has resonated with me a bit. Um, you know, but I, like I said, you know, I, you know, this is not a right or wrong. This is just being in a really quite frankly crappy place and having to make the best decision, you know, um, you know, based on that. So I still stand there. Um, I I feel pretty strongly that the board should make a recommendation. We have talked about this more than anybody else in town has. The five of us and and our staff know more about this than anybody else in town to go to town meeting and pit or potentially pit factions of the town against each other when the neighbors are very informed, but the rest of the town might be less so informed. The neighbors even there aren't necessarily all informed. It's just setting us up for you know, a a process in town meeting, though. I I don't know why we would invite if we, I mean, unless we feel so strongly that we just cannot make a recommendation, and I certainly don't feel that way. So I feel like that would be a mistake for the board to do. Very.
I could.
Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I wanted to uh, thank the uh, folks who have spoken tonight from the, from the public, both the butters from, and the neighbors in both parcels. And learned a lot from listening to your commentary. One of the thing that that struck me um, and resonates with me about the discussion tonight is um, one of the points raised was a precedent relative to rezoning developed properties versus a precedent of um, rezoning, um, or putting an overlay, not rezoning, establishing an overlay district on the existing zoning for properties that uh, might not be already developed with buildings and might be pre-existing non-conforming. And so one of the um, and trying to work through the pros and cons of both sites, because I think both sites are equally complicated in terms that they have they have great opportunities, but they also have great constraints. Um, and I'm very sensitive to the uh, the uh, discussion put forth by the neighbors on Beale Street that they didn't have enough time to look at this, and that's, that's, that's critical. Um, my sense is, is that um, if we were to look at a potential site where we could actually down the road realize some housing that would meet the um, help us deal with the housing crisis we have in the town in terms of providing uh, a diversity of housing options for senior citizens who want to downsize or younger families, what have you, or younger folks who want to start in Hingham. It seems to me that even though this this zoning legis, this zoning uh, parameter, um, this statute in the legislation from the state is talking about capacity, potential capacity. It seems to me that if we were to start looking at a potential actuality, and of course, there's private property rights, of course, this would be totally dependent upon the voluntary interest in a landowner to subscribe to any changes in the use of their property. I'm not saying that the state or anybody would impose a use on a private property owner. But it seems to me that one of the, one of the flaws I see with the MBTA community initiative is it doesn't allow a town to put together a proactive approach to actually putting housing in place. And because we're all wrapped around all these legalities and parameters, and it just seems to me that if down the road at some point that uh, a proactive uh, proposal, solution, what have you, could be made on a property that's not currently developed with buildings, that maybe we should allow that off, that potential to proceed. So I'm, I've kind of changed my my opinion relative to uh, proposing both go in front of town meeting. I I think that I think we've heard a lot of good information. I, in my view of the world, I think I've heard the pulse and um, and yes, at town meeting, we hear a lot more, and if, and down the road, if in a contingency plan, if the state doesn't choose to accept our proposal um, relative to this this sub-district breakout and all the research we've done, and then if we have to go back to the drawing board, that we've already, we have four or five parcels available that we could relook at. So I guess my sense is I'm in favor of going with G G G at this point, and I'd be curious to hear what, you know, fellow board members think.
Thanks, Gary. You're helpful. Um, I ended up with the order, uh, Gordon, you want to go ahead or?
Uh, yeah, so uh, comments from uh, Mr. Bright and others who have Many town meetings, uh, in the rearview mayor, you know, I. I was back and forth at the last meeting about whether we do some sort of bifurcated proposal or, or not. I, I agree, we need to do our job as, as the planning board. Kevin, you've been saying this from, from the beginning. We've immersed ourselves in this. We need to put together a, a. A warrant article that A, we think is. Uh, will comply. And but B is, is, is thoughtfully done in all the ways that Gary just articulated. So. You know, I, I think that is the way to go. As I said, I don't think this is our last rodeo on this thing. But there's still a great deal within our control as the planning board should some project. Materialize at some point in the future, given all of the constraints that we've talked about. On the French Street parcel, not least of which is the owner. Um, and. You know, I think it is, it's a serious and responsive. Approach to legislation that we all wish was very different, but. Given how some other towns are, are potentially reacting, I think that distinguishes Hangham in a favorable way. So. Long drawn out, uh, agreement with, with Gary's approach to GGG.
Thank you, Gordon. Tracy, I, I spoke earlier. I don't have anything else to add. I don't want to be on the spot, but.
No, I, my, um. Position really hasn't changed. Um, I'm comfortable going forward with GGG.
Thank you, Tracy. And Rita?
Well, I respect my, um, fellow board members. Um, I heard everybody talk. Unfortunately, the people on Beale Street just didn't have enough time, but I do. Like I said, I was on one area. You know, I was against French Street in the beginning, but I do see. Where a lot of people spoke up, it would be very rejected. In that area. So I, I'll. Go with the GGG. Make it unanimous.
Thank you, Rita. I'll make a motion in a moment. I just, you want to say to members of the public, but on the call tonight and those participated in the past, I mean, we've had. At least in my five years in the board. As much participation on a single topic about this as we've had for anything else in the last five years and I'm. You know, look, it's, it's really important for members of the public to participate and you can see what happens when public does come and, and we do our best to listen and I hope that the very least you feel like we listened. And we heard some of your comments and we heard some of your criticism and we heard some of your feedback and we tried to incorporate it into something that really works. So. I'm very, very appreciative of members of the public being on the call. Um, some of these meetings get long and some of them go late. Um, you know, but this is the job that five of us signed up for and, and all of us take it very seriously and we really do appreciate your feedback, both in writing and at the meetings. And thank you for your time and, and your participation as well. Um, and, and obviously, you know, this is just the first piece of this puzzle. So go in front of advisory, go in front of the select board and ultimately it's up to the town to make a decision, the town meeting. So, um, and we welcome your voices there as well as part of this process. With that. I will make a recommended motion that we recommend the town meeting amend the zoning bylaw by adopting the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Article GGZ. Zoning article and the form presented during the public hearings tonight.
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. And a quick roll call vote. Rita De Silva.
Aye.
Uh, Gordon Carr.
Aye.
Tracy Schreiber.
Aye.
Uh, Garrett Tondor Dick.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. And Mike and Emily, do we need to withdraw the, um, LLL from consideration? And make a current motion that we request the select or withdraw the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Article LLL zoning article from consideration. Second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Rita. Um, roll call vote again. Tracy Schreiber.
Aye.
Garrett Tondor Dick.
Aye.
Gordon Carr.
Aye.
Rita De Silva.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you very much, uh, board. Feels like we've gotten through everything, but we do actually have one more zoning article left. Um. This is MMM. This is our first substantive hearing on this night. Members of the public, you're more than welcome to stay. Welcome your participation. This is, um, South Shore Country Club zoning district. I think I'm going to turn it over to Susan Murphy, if she's still with us, to go over this. Um. In some senses like a cleanup article, but, um, I think it'd be helpful for Susan to give background here so we can kind of talk about this and move forward here. So Susan, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, um, I am going to and, um. I apologize. You got through that vote so quickly. I didn't have my slides pulled up. Um. So I will be with you in one second. Hold on, just waiting for my. Screen to open and I can share it. Okay. Okay, can everyone see this, uh, slide that says article MMM?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, um. This zoning article has to do with the zoning district within which. This South Shore Country Club is located. Um, it's had a little bit of a history to it that I'm going to walk you through. Um, and. This is more a cleanup article. There was an incomplete title reference in a zoning change that happened in 2004. Um, and I'm just going to walk the board through a few slides and then. Explain kind of, you know, the history of the parcel. It should only take me a few minutes. And then also, um. The, since this was a select board article, um, and after it was submitted, then, um, Town Council John Cofflin and I. Went through and kind of recreated the history and so that's resulted. In a, a suggested, recommended motion. Um, that's more specific than the original article and I'll, and I'll show you that at the end. There's only five slides. Okay. Is everyone, sorry, my slide moving? Are you seeing them?
Yes.
Okay, so. The area that's referenced in, uh, the zoning article is approximately this area. Um, I drew it. So that's why I'm saying the shading is approximate. Um, but what happened is that the town, this, the country club property and all the surrounding property, including, you know, the homes that are to the north of it. Were all privately owned. So, um, there was, the country club was there, the golf course was there. It was all privately owned. Um, it was going to be redeveloped as a, the entire country club parcel in the 1980s, mid 1980s. As, you know, hundreds of homes. And at the time, um, kind of former planning board, select board, uh, member, John Riley. That, you know, this is too important, an asset to the town and he marshaled the forces. Um, and town went to town meeting and voted to, uh, take the country club property. Um. There was the. The larger portion where the country club, the buildings are, and there were these smaller portions. The town, um, there was a smaller subdivision proposed. Which the planning board at that time denied. Um, that went through litigation of its own and in, as part of that settlement. The town acquired at the, you know, relatively around the same time. A, a taking of the larger parcel and received a deed from the developer of this smaller parcel. Um, as I'm going to explain on the subsequent slides. A portion of this, it outlined in blue. Was already rezoned to business recreation in 1976 and I'll explain why it's just this. It wasn't just this little piece, but this little piece was part of a, a prior rezoning. And in 2004, there was an intention to rezone the entire rest of the country club. To business recreation. In order that it was in the appropriate zone for all of the uses on the parcel. Um, rather than Residence D as in dog, it was Residence D, which is, um, was a multifamily zoning district. There we go. Okay, so what this shows is. Where the zoning line was in 1988. So, and this is the plan that's referenced in. The, uh, the Warren article. Um, and what it shows is this is the small subdivision that I was referring to that was proposed. Um, was denied by the planning board, but then there was a settlement between the town. So the developer had proposed, even though the driveway for the country club pretty much goes right through where it says business recreation there. Had proposed to put a road right next to it, which as we know from. Layout, planning board subdivision layout, not, not a safe juxtaposition. Um, and as part of the settlement, this. Road was never built. This was conveyed to the town. So it was shown on this lot layout for a subdivision. Never built, was conveyed by deed to the town. This, this is a access drive easement that went to the houses. But you can see, and this line goes back to 1976, this plan. Shows where the business recreation zoning line was and it kind of cut through. This knob that was later created. It didn't exist in 1976. But you can see how this portion was already in business recreation. And you'll see that on this 19, um. I'm sorry, 2003 zoning map. So this is before the rezoning in 2004. You can see the area, this brown area, which is, um, business recreation. Which was rezoned in 1976 while it was still under private ownership. And it included the buildings, the entrance drives, the parking area, that's what was rezoned, but the rest of the country club. Was not rezoned at that time. It was only kind of the. The building, the infrastructure, the buildings and the infrastructure that was rezoned. And that little knob we were looking at is kind of would come in somewhere around here at this. Bend in the parcel. So this is what it looked like in 2003 be, on the zoning map before the 2004. Um, rezoning article. This is our current zoning map. Which shows all of that entire area. Being rezoned to business recreation because that was. The intention and understanding of town meeting that what it did. So after. The town voted in 2004. The zoning map went to the printer, was changed to show. The entire area right up to these. Um, homes as being rezoned. So what happened is, as I mentioned, there was, the town acquired the property. It's 152 or so acres and change. And in the 2004 Warren article, and there's a memo that, um, is posted, you all would have received it. It's also posted for the public to read. That breaks it down, that breaks down kind of the process. Both the, the comment in the Warren in 2004. And the report to town meeting, which was made coincidentally. In 2004 by John Riley, the same person who had advocated for saving the country club. Both stated that the purpose of the zoning article was to rezone the entire parcel. Um, however, in going back and kind of recreating all of this. The town saw that one of the, uh, even though it referenced the entire assessors parcel. And in, uh, referenced the tax parcel, which is the entire part, property. Um, there was a missing title reference. It referenced one of the documents, recorded documents and not the second recorded document. And so for that reason, for the avoidance of doubt, we say. Um, the select board had set, you know, proposed to have that land shown as country club road. Like I said, when John Cofflin and I went and recreated it, we saw that. The little knob piece was, was already rezoned in 1976. And that the intention in 2004 was to include the entire property. So this has now been reworded. It's a little bit more in the legalese style of things, um, but I'll just walk through it. So it starts kind of the same that the vote, that the town vote to confirm. That the parcel shown as country club road. Um, in this recorded plan has heretofore been rezoned. To business recreation district. So it's asking town meeting to just confirm that it had already done that. By these two prior votes, 1976 and 2004 and. To the extent that any portion of said parcel has not been rezoned. So due to that technical, um, kind of incomplete title reference. Then to vote to rezone it at this time. So basically the town's position is it's already been rezoned, but because of the incomplete title reference. If a question is raised. Then we're doing it now. So that's, that's kind of, I, I don't know, Kevin, hopefully I didn't go through that too fast. Happy to answer any questions. Um, like I said, there's a memo, a couple of page long memo, um, that's posted and went to all the board members that goes into more of the history and the detail.
Dude, thanks. That's concise. I think. You know, complete, um. You know, colleagues in the board, any questions here? I mean, I think the maps are very helpful and kind of the. You know, your, your elementary drawing is, is quite useful actually to kind of get a sense of where, you know, where kind of this oversight that happened.
Kevin, I had a question.
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
And looking at the, at the map, the detailed map where the, uh, the rezoned. Parcel. That, that map, yeah, that plan, the, the plot plan, subdivision plan. Um, there's a, um. I guess it's the next sheet if I could. Yeah, that one there. What we have is currently, um, what was country club road. Was Residence District D and I understand the rationale to. Uh, clean this, clean up the, uh, the zoning district boundaries. Um, but I also see there's an access road, there's an easement. That easement had Residence D on both sides of it when it was originally set up. Does this rezoning? Uh, and, and is that a private way that, that, that proposed easement to the other?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a driveway right now.
Driveway. So it's a private way. So in, in any of this. When, when there was Residence D on both sides of the little driveway. One parcel including it and then to the south on the other side of it. And one would assume then that the. That the owner would have access, I guess, to the middle of that. Was it a lane? I'm just wondering. Are there any, um, does this place any, um, use restrictions or potential? Property restrictions on those three parcels that are lot. What is it? Lot three, lot four?
Twelve, one, three, one, three and four. Yeah.
Does that impact these in terms of their rights to? You know, access develop to what they're doing? Cause it sounds like a shared driveway approach in there. I'm not totally sure.
Yeah, well, this, so what the town is doing is not affecting anything. On the other side of this line. So, and in fact, in 2014, so you'll see. That area, Gary, which is the bright green, which was Residence D.
Okay.
Did those lots right in here? But in, so you can see that here where it goes right up to Bishop's Lane, right?
Yeah.
In 2014, the owners of those parcels came to the town and town meeting in 2014. Actually rezoned them because the, all the rest of this is Residence A.
Right.
So those parcels were all rezoned in 2014 at the request of the homeowners to Residence A. And their drive, that driveway easement that we were talking about comes in right here. In the Residence A to those parcels. So they, they already came to the town and cleaned up their zoning. Um, to confirm that they're in Residence A and not in Residence D. Um, so they're all set.
Okay, so there are any, there are no unintended consequences for this. It cleans it all up. Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary. That's, that's a good question. Um. Tracy, Gordon, Rita, any, anything from you guys?
No, I don't have anything.
Nope, seems like a cleanup.
Yeah. Rita, concur.
No, I'm good. Yep.
Susan, thank you. Um, any members of the public on the call wish to, wish to comment on this? All right, not seeing anyone. Um, so. This should be, I think, an easier vote then. Um, I, I think then with that with the board to move forward, I'd recommend that the town meeting amend the zoning bylaw by adopting the quote unquote South Shore Country Club zoning district and quote. Zoning article in the form presented during the public hearings tonight. For a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Gordon. Um. Roll call vote is in order. Tracy Schreiber.
Aye.
Garrett Tondor Dick.
Aye.
Rita De Silva.
Aye.
And Gordon Carr.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Susan, thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
I think that takes us to the end of our zoning discussion tonight. Um. Maybe our zoning discussions generally. Um, and, um. Mike, Emily, anything else? I actually don't have the agenda in front of me beyond just the, uh, the meeting notes. Is there any administrative reports or minutes?
Uh, no, just in terms of schedule for the rest of the week, um, AgCon will be, um, presenting a summary of MBTA communities tomorrow evening. Um, and then their hearing will be held on Thursday. Uh, they'll also be, um, reconsidering Article BBB, the breweries. Um, zoning article and Article, um, K3, which is the personal wireless services. Facility overlay district article tomorrow evening. And then the one that you just acted on, MMM. Um, will open on Thursday along with the, their formal review of, um. Article GGG MBTA community. So, um, Tracy had indicated, uh, this afternoon that he may be available to attend. One or both of those evenings to represent the board. Um, and it sounded like Kevin, you may be able to squeeze in a bit of, um, tomorrow evening.
Yeah, I'll plan to call in tomorrow, um, certainly. Um, I, I can't speak exactly. Yeah, I'll plan to call in tomorrow, um, certainly. Um, I, I can't speak exactly to my timing, um, but I, I can't attend in person, but I can certainly call in. But Tracy, if you're on the call, that's fine as well. And anybody else planning on attending? Uh, if not, we should probably think about that. I just don't have a quorum.
Is, is this on Zoom, the me, uh, the AgCon?
They, they do have hybrid meetings, so yeah, you could listen in um, remotely.
All right, Gary, we'll coordinate, because if you're going to attend, then um, then, then I'll, I'll plan not to attend. I just want to make sure that we don't kind of run into a quorum issue um, for the board.
I, I know very well, I'm worrying, I have to move something, but.
Sure, sure, of course. No, no, that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure we obviously didn't post a meeting tomorrow night. And Tracy, you're okay? I, you know, I want to, I want to speak for you. I take ten tomorrow on Thursday, or at least uh, kind of be present if they have any questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. That's very helpful. Anything else, Emily, Mike?
Um, in, in terms of just scheduling for the next several weeks, um, so next Monday, we do have a meeting, but it's the last marathon. It, it, there's right now one application. There may be another one. Um, but it's, it should be a relatively light evening. And then uh, we're back on the bi, bi-weekly, um, or, you know, scheduled meetings per volume of applications, um, going forward. So a, after next week, the next meeting, we, we have a week off and then um, April eighth, and then school vacation week, and then April twenty second. Um, so two meetings in April.
And Mike, uh, sorry, April twenty second, is that the Monday before town meeting, or is that actually town meeting?
That is, yep.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Um, and for Wednesday's meeting, do I, we need to attend and kind of open and close it, or can we just pull it?
We will cancel it tomorrow with the clerk's office.
That's enough of this. Okay, perfect.
Um, Kevin, you had asked me at a prior meeting, you know, I, I think the goal always is to get town meeting done in one night. But I think someone had asked what happens if it tight, doesn't take. And um, Michelle Montsegar, the Assistant Town Administrator, confirmed that in what they hope will not happen, they need a second night. It will be Thursday.
Okay.
So it would be Wednesday, the twenty fourth, and Thursday, the twenty fifth are the dates to kind of pencil in there. Well, definitely the twenty fourth, twenty fifth is the maybe.
Thank you, Susan. Um, I think a, after next week, the, the, the permanent discussions, we'll, we'll go through and kind of make sure all of our zoning articles are accounted for and kind of we have the kind of volunteers to speak at town meeting. I mean, in the five years I've been doing this, I don't think, we haven't had much need for the planning board members to kind of get up and talk about the zoning. Doesn't mean that won't be the case here. Um, you know, we have a lot of zoning here, but um, you typically advise your leads and then, um, you know, but we, we certainly should have someone queued up just in case. So um, we, we can kind of make sure we have all that set for next meeting. I think Gordon, you can't attend time meeting, my remind, and Rita, is that right? Are we both of you?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
All right, so Gary, Tracy, and I'll make sure we handle the uh, you know, these zoning articles and, and what's like here and that.
And, and then one thing, um, Emily, we can check with the moderator. Um, usually because the town had the, the, the planning board puts its report in the warrant now, which is helpful. So back in the day, the planning board used to get up on every article and make its report. Now it's in the warrant. I think we just need to check with the moderator, whether he, he just, he wants to wait and see if there's comments or questions on MBTA community, or whether he feels it's important enough that he wants a presentation. So I think that's the one that I think we need to figure that out on before. Otherwise, it's just the planning board gets up if there's a question. So, but I, I don't know what the moderator will want for that article.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much. Um, it's eight twenty-six. Anything else from members of the board? All right, then um, finally seeing you next Monday. I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Uh, second?
Second.
Second. And any uh, any needs? Thank you all very much for, I think, a really good set of discussions. And Emily, Michael, thank you very much. Susan, very much appreciated.